Meeting of the Somerville Planning Board from March ninth, twenty twenty-two will please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting as required by the Open Public Meeting Act has been provided. Copy of the notice specifying the date, time, and location was one posted on the bulletin board outside the hall, two mailed fax or emailed to the Fuhrerian News, and three given to the board administrator. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be moved to the issues that the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and if debarment appropriate to judicial hearing must be maintained at all times.
Bernie Nevada.
Here.
Peter of Zenski here. Dana Sullivan.
Here.
Randall Brady.
Here.
Andrea Dare.
Here.
Art Akins.
Here.
Jason Kreska.
Here.
Al Karesis.
Here.
Larry Cleveland.
Here.
Christopher Attic.
Here.
Canada.
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Michael Fradman. I'm going to turn yet Sabo Shawk, Corsini, Galestia, Roddy, and Fisher here in Somerville. I'm here on the Oak Somerville Project, representing Oak Somerville LLC. This is an application that we're seeking preliminary final major site plan approval necessary for the construction. First, the demolition of the one-story building and construction of two restaurants. The western restaurant is proposed to be three stories in height, and the eastern restaurant is proposed to be two stories in height, including an open roof terrace facing East Main Street on the second floor overlooking the courthouse. Property owned is owned in fee simple by the applicant, currently and historically operated as various retail slash personal service uses and a luncheonette. This application proposes the complete demolition of the obsolete structure and construction of approximately nine thousand nine hundred square foot restaurants. Each restaurant is expected to have a distinct food menu, thematic approach, and aesthetic appeal. Each restaurant is designed to complement and enhance the downtown Somerville commercial district through the use of exterior materials, building massing, street presence, and connectivity to the existing sidewalks and street. Each restaurant is, will have a separate main entrance, but will to a large extent share similar delivery and service entrance, storage space, elevator, egress, and toilet facilities. The west restaurant, proposed to be oak, will be a three-story brick manor house exterior apparent to the cast stone accents, wrought iron railings, and sheet metal roofing. The first floor interior will feature a two-story entrance foyer reception space, exposed steel and timber framing, table and booth seating, and an open kitchen to the south. The second floor interior spaces will feature an open table seating and bar space with timber roof trusses and two flexible private dining rooms with exposed roof timbers to accommodate guests of varying quantities. The third floor will feature a glass enclosed space with a glass roof for additional seating and bar space. The east restaurant will be two stories with a stone and glass exterior. The expression of stone and exposed timber wood construction will be carried into the interior. The first floor will have a bar area adjacent to the reception space and visually connected to East Main Street. The central area of the first floor will feature a combination of booth seating and open to a large kitchen. Behind these spaces will be a large table seating area. The second floor, which would be accessed internally behind the post station, will be both a cupboard and an open roof terrace with the intention of the guests to view, enjoy the views of East Main Street and the historic courthouse. This application proposes the installation of a new elevator providing ADA accessible accessibility and site improvements allowing for deliveries and traffic receptacles on South Bridge. Architectural lighting and signage are proposed on both facades facing South Bridge and East Main Street. The restaurant is going to be operated by Gusto Restaurant and Hospitality Group, which was founded by restaurateur Mick Jabukai with the opening of his flagship Easton PA restaurant River Grill in two thousand and three. Mick has a lifelong experience in the hospitality industry. At the age of twenty-two, Mick opened his first restaurant in New Providence, Rhode Island. During the next ten years, he would go on to open three additional restaurants in Easton, Pennsylvania, in central New Jersey before heading west to Easton, Pennsylvania in the early two thousands. Following the success of River Grill, Mick opened Ocean on nearby Ferry Street in Easton in two thousand and six. In two thousand and eight, Mick opened Sogo, Homachi, and Denville, New Jersey. And in July of two thousand and seventeen, Three Oak Steakhouse, Mick's much anticipated third Easton restaurant, opened downtown next to the Easton Public Market on North Hampton Street, which will model this restaurant in both menu and design. Next, Mick opened Townley House, a sixteen-room boutique hotel at the former Townley Mansion in downtown Easton. And just a few weeks ago, Mick acquired two new properties in downtown Easton for nearly three million dollars. Somerville now has an opportunity to welcome Mick's professional team into Somerville's growing and dynamic restaurant scene, and this team has a proven track record of high-end dining experiences. For purposes of zoning requirements, the use of courses of permitted principal use in the ECBD zone. By way of existing nonconformities, there's a minimum lot width seventy-five feet is required and forty-six point seven feet is proposed. There's also a variance for minimum rear yard where twenty-five feet is required and twenty-seven point six, six feet is proposed. Maximum purview coverage ninety-five feet percent is required, hundred percent is proposed. Oudings and cap and canopies, a maximum projection of four feet where seven point eight feet is proposed. There's a variance or projection over a portion of the sidewalk. There's a variance for window area, forty percent on first floor facade is required. I think we're at around twenty-nine percent. There's also waivers for dumpsters, not permitted in B-one zone. Of course, the restaurant used to be, it would be appropriate to have the dumpster on site. Street trees, there's only one existing street tree and none are proposed because of the width of the sidewalk. A site lighting uniformity ratio, there's a four to one average required at nine is proposed, and site illumination where there's a maximum of point five foot candles at the property line where four point four foot candles at the property line are proposed. For signs, there's a variance. Oh, no, we eliminated the variance from a projection of eight inches for the oak sign, so we don't need that variance. And then there's also a proposed painted oak on the brick, but it's located on the second floor, so that will require a variance for wall sign location. With me, I have, certainly we have our whole professional team. We have the owners, we have the restaurateurs. But I intend to introduce Keith Cahill from Bowler, our civil engineer. He's going to go over the existing conditions and the proposed site plan. We've also gone through extensive operational testimony. We're going to try to have our engineer go through all of the operational testimony. But certainly, we have Mick and Jack Cus and Keith Billgard if there's any operational questions you want to ask. Our second witness is Jeff Martenson, he's our architect. And our final witness is Art Bernard, a professional planner. As indicated earlier, notice has been provided consistent with the municipal land use law. Affidavits of publication and certified mailings to adjacent property owners and other outside agencies are on file with the board. And unless there are any legal questions, I would ask that Mr. Cahill step up. And if you don't want to swear at everybody at once, or?
Yeah, I'll do that. Just let me get a couple of housekeeping items out of the way. Mr. Chairman, as Mr. Fradman indicated, notice of publication proofs were provided to the Board's Jurisdiction Act tonight. In addition, we have some exhibits that have been premarked for use of reference. Exhibit A-one will mark as the application and supporting documentation. A-two will be the notice of publication proofs. A-three will have the site plan from Bowler Engineering dated June third, two thousand and twenty. A-four will have control points boundary topographic survey. A-five will have the Martenson Group plans at the restaurant dated September sixteen, two thousand and twenty-one. A-six will have Mike Paul's report that's dated February sixteen, two thousand and twenty-two. That's A-six. As A-seven, we'll submit the compilation of documents, site plans, architectures, colorized rendering, signage, and exterior materials submitted by the applicant that's dated January twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-two. And then the last thing is I do have here as A-eight, I have the Borough Fire Preventions Letter dated February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two. So I think that for at least right now, deals with all of the exhibits. And yeah, Michael, swear at everybody at once. Oh, you know what, one more quick thing. I think there was one pre-existing variance said here. The minimum sidewalk width along South Bridge Street, there's a required eight-foot requirement and what's proposed is six point nine, that's pre-existing.
Okay, thank you.
You started the testimony, you're about to give this forward, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. All right, so we want to set up over here?
Can you just give your name and spell it whatever?
Absolutely. It's Keith Cahill, C-A-H-I-L-L, from Bowler Engineering, thirty Independence Boulevard, Warren, New Jersey. Could you give the board the benefit of your licenses and professional experience? Absolutely. I have a civil engineering degree from Rutgers University, I have a master's degree in Stevens Institute of Technology, a professional engineer licensed in the state of New Jersey that accepted as a professional engineer as an expert witness in civil engineering in more than a hundred different municipalities throughout the state of New Jersey. I'm a principal at Bowler Engineering, I've been working in the industry for twenty-eight years and have been at Bowler for twenty-five years responsible for oversight of site plan designing. Thank you. Did I miss this aerial exhibit being marked? It's going to be A-nine. Perfect.
All right, can you just give us the title of that and the date and?
Absolutely. I want to just use this exhibit to do an idea of what we're looking at across the street. A-nine, this is entitled Aerial Exhibit Chief One of One dated one twenty-six, two thousand and two. So as reference, north will be to the top of the page. And what you see here is South North Bridge Street running in the center, in the top, in a north-south direction, and East Main Street, West Main Street, they're divided by South Bridge in the middle of the site. The site itself is yellow, outlined in yellow, and currently it's about point two eight acres. On that, I'd say it's what we call a zero property line build-out, meaning the building itself that's on there, it's a one-story building, multi-tenanty, and along East Main Street, it's built up to the property line. On South Bridge Street, it actually is built into the right-of-way hair, about point six feet as our surveys show. So it's actually not compliant as it sits today. In the rear, it's the building gets within four point seven feet of the property line. And you may be familiar, in the back of that property, there is an alleyway that goes behind all the buildings of Front Main Street and sends all the way across. So interesting enough, that alleyway currently is about ten feet wide and eleven, excuse me, eleven feet between building to building. And there's a ten-foot wide access driveway easement that benefits this site as well as our neighbors in the south on that. In terms of that, it's a zero building line on the adjacent building as well. There's a retail building to our east, which we are abutting using the same walls. In general, you're very familiar with the site, it's basically across the street from where we're sitting. To the north is the county's building. As you can see, to the south is a residential building, and on either side of us are commercial properties. I just want to highlight some of those existing conditions. The site itself has about seventy-three, seventy-three hundred feet of frontage on East Main, and we've got two hundred and six feet along Bridge Street. The width of property gets narrower as you get into the back, it's about forty-seven feet wide in the rear where the south side of the site. As I mentioned, that building's a one-story building, it's about ten thousand six hundred square feet. And as mentioned, it has some existing deviations in terms of setback. More specifically, the front yard on South Bridge Street is into the right-of-way by point six. The rear yard is four point seven feet, which is also a variance, or existing nonconformance, excuse me. And as mentioned, the site is a hundred percent in purview coverage currently where ninety-five percent is required. It's interesting to point out that height issue is based on either twenty-five foot minimum or the height of the building, it may be more restricted. So right now, if you use the twenty-five foot, we're only, setback, we're only about four point seven feet away from that setback. And I want to point that out because we are requesting a variance for our rear yard in the redevelopment, but we're improving the situation significantly. As mentioned, the sidewalks along our frontage to Bridge Street, we only got just under seven feet for an existing sidewalk where an eight-foot would be required. Top front, we have about eighteen feet in a nice walkway, plenty of room, some street trees along there. But we are restricted along South Bridge, not enough room to have street trees in that sidewalk. In general, too, I mentioned the easement in the back of the building, which allows access through that alleyway. There's also a parking easement that benefits this lot that is approximately large enough for four cars to park there. It's on Lot one point oh one, it's twenty-four feet deep and fifty-two feet wide there. As part of the project and as described, the intent is to wipe down the existing building, knock it down and start all over. So to show what they, go to my next exhibit on the proposal and go through the redevelopment. And unfortunately, as a civil engineer and a zero property line construction, I don't have really nice pictures, but the architect has fantastic pictures to show you. That's pretty marked as A-three. This is A-three, fantastic. A-three, as mentioned, is the overall site plan landing by Bowler Engineering. Before I make you show the proposal, again, for reference, north will be to the top of the page, and you can see Main Street at the top, South Bridge running on the left-hand side. For clarity, we take the exact same sheet that's in your site plan package and just colorized it for ease of description.
So you know what, let's just, since the other one wasn't colorized, okay.
A-ten.
So it says the sheet number, what's that sheet number?
Sure, it's C dash oh one.
So it's colorized sheet C dash oh one of exhibit A-three.
Yes. You good?
Yep.
All right. So with this, as mentioned, knock down the existing building, come back with a brand-new building. Proposed building's nine thousand nine hundred and ninety square feet, so it's actually smaller than what's existing there. We are bringing it into performance in terms of the front yard setback. We are now within our property only, not into the right-of-way, which helps, correct? In the rear, what you'll notice now in this rear line and how far the building is setback, before I mentioned four point seven, we're now taking it out to twenty-seven point six. Five times more space, opening it up, free, free open hair, just makes the visibility a lot better, whatever it may be. And we're going to utilize that area for some of the back of house stuff, like a dumpster. You know, walking up and down Main Street and seeing some of this stuff out there, the recycling and all, we anticipate doing all of our hauling privately for both trash and recycling. We have a nice area fully enclosed, so you won't see it, and keep it from blowing away. As mentioned as well, we have a lift back there to get to the finished floor of the actual kitchen. And there's a loading zone proposed. Forgot to mention, the existing building has no loading zone we're proposing on here. It is slightly undersized per your ordinance, which is like waiver, but this type of use doesn't need large tractor-trailers coming in and out of it, smaller van-type, signaling type things that can fit back here. So the aspect of making the building footprint smaller, we've actually significantly improved the back of house of it, improved that alleyway that cuts between all the buildings in the back that comes out the South Bridge Street. Couple other items in terms of that. Even though I made it twenty-seven point six feet, which the underlying zone is at twenty-five feet, I still need a variance for the setback because it then says, ha-ha, the building is. So when you go to that elevator, to that, I have to be at forty-five feet, and I'm at, forty-two point five feet, and I'm at twenty-seven point six. But again, significant improvement to that. The aspect of if you walked up and down there and saw every other building along there, you're having more space than others necessarily. So in that, we're going to respectfully requesting a variance for that rear yard setback. We still will have the existing nonconformances in terms of lot width. Can't do anything about that in terms of the lot itself. But in terms of the bulk standards, that's a significant improvement. In regards to the other waiver in terms of the purview coverage, yes, that's going to carry it as a new variance. It's a hundred percent today, it's going to be a hundred percent tomorrow, requirement's ninety-five percent. So that's just part of those things. Couple other quick items. In terms of the construction, we're going to be reconstructing the sidewalk along both Bridge Street and the areas out in front of Main Street. We're going to try to minimize full disturbance so that it can still be utilized up along Main Street. But where we do disturb, we are going to reconstruct it to be match existing conditions of today in the same type of format. Your engineer asked us to make sure that we protect the existing tree, which we will do. Couple other highlights, we have five on-street parking stalls along Bridge Street, which we're going to maintain. We also had uniquely on this block, a loading zone that's out front. It's sixty feet long and about fourteen feet wide. That's there today, it's signed that way, used here and there. But we intend to use that for, if for any reason we don't have a vehicle that's going to fit into this or there's somebody there. We're fortunate enough to have that immediately out front of the site and don't anticipate any concerns with how this site will operate in terms of restaurants because we actually have a lot more space to bring deliveries in and handle those items. So it's a great layout and the functionality of the site itself with the amenities in the front of it. In regards to just a couple of other points relative to the site and its operations I got into, the building and the architect's going to go through his nice pictures. As mentioned, along the western side of it, that's going to be a three-story building with a rooftop amenity. Beautiful looking aspect, if you've never been out to the restaurants in Easton, I highly recommend to go see it, it's just, besides the great food, it's a great atmosphere. And being a Bridgewater resident, I can't wait for this to, hopefully come into town and eat here. With that, that three-story building there, the other half of the building, to the east side of that, is a two-story building, as mentioned, and that also has nice views out to the courtyard, over to the courthouse. That aspect of the building really describes, again, there's no outdoor seating. We do have a large sidewalk out front, but we're not proposing anything. We have a nice space to allow customers to come in and get into the building in a safe manner. As I mentioned, we do have an area for the trash enclosure and a lift to bring anything up to the same elevation of the restaurant itself. Couple other quick things in terms of just general items for the number of employees and the maximum shift, we anticipate thirty-five for the restaurants and include over fifty people in total. In terms of deliveries, we do expect to have vehicles, one to two a day, but with smaller type vans. You know, the type of this type of restaurants is going to bring higher quality foods and things in, so you're going to have smaller needs in terms of the size of the vehicles coming in. Any larger vehicle that was dropping off something, as I mentioned, we have the space in the front of the site. And again, something like that's one of the two to three times a week versus that. And no time do we expect anyone to be on site for more than fifteen until a large vehicle, maybe forty-five minutes. And that few of it, deliveries wouldn't be a concern for how the site or the surrounding roadway network will operate. I mentioned the trash, again, picking up three to four times a week, private haulers. The nice part about it with two restaurants back there, they both have the commonality of using it, so there's going to be nothing new out into the street. We want to keep a nice clean look along the front to, so that's attractive. And when you see the elevations, you'll know what I mean. Terms of hours of operation, in general, from the people that work there, and chefs and cooks and things of that nature, they're going to be there many more hours than the hours of serving. But the serving hours for the Oak Restaurant is going to be, let me get this straight, Tuesday through, Tuesday through Sunday, closed on Mondays. We're going to be serving dinner only in there at this time, but I reserve the rights that we ever have great crowds work during, for lunch. In regards to the bar hours, we'll be open till two AM on the weekends, and then during the week we'll be closing more like at one o'clock. I think that covers in general the hours and the shifts and everybody on that. Just a couple of other quick items, so in terms of deviations. And I have a planner that's going to do a great job on every single one of these, so if I miss something, Art's going to pick it up. Your engineer also did a fantastic job in summarizing it in his letter, but I'm going to hit a few more. There's a mention about awning, overhanging along South Bridge Street. As I mentioned, first of all, we brought the building to be on our property, but we have a nice awning that sticks out over the sidewalk, seven point eight feet. The requirement is to be no more than four feet. In this case, where this occurs, the building has been slid back four feet off the property line. So if you do the math, we're less than four feet over the property line, but we're more than eight feet on the sidewalk. So we need a variance of being over the sidewalk by eight feet. And we're only projecting into the right-of-way in this area, three point eight feet. Because otherwise, if I put on the zero property line, I'd be allowed to be four feet over. So the whole aspect is if I'm driving up and down the street or walking up and down the street, it's not overhanging further than what your ordinance would be allowed because the building's setback. That's the point of that. I think it's a great idea in terms of when I look at the elevations and the scalability of the building. Very attractive and something that I hope you also consider in terms of granting a variance for that. The other aspect of this awning, you have a maximum of fifty percent covering the sidewalk. Due to the area, and we're doing our math the way it's asked for, we're at fifty-seven point one. For reference, the existing building is seventy-one point four. So we're making it less, bringing it more closer to conformance. And I think, when again, when you look at it, I think the architect's done a great job to give a nice building that comes to town. And I trust that it kind of breaks up the building and does a nice job on just putting a really nice look on that face on South Bridge. I mentioned the loading space, too. You require twelve by thirty-five feet, ours is seventeen by twenty. But in terms of servicing, the types of vehicles for where we are in the back, it's going to operate safely and efficiently. And I also believe in the fact that there's no existing loading zone for the tenants that are there now, for this person, or for this tenant, we're providing one, and it's going to meet their needs. So again, request a waiver for that for deviations. Relative to lighting, the building now in the lighting, obviously we don't have any place to put a parking lot. So with that, interesting enough, maximum light levels exceed at the property line. Interesting enough, we have a, we're allowed to have a step right at the property line in the door entrance. And for me, as the engineer, I want it to be safe and not have somebody step up and trip. So there's lighting levels at a four point four foot candles rather than one point oh. But I want to identify the fact that it's only into the right-of-way. They'll have no concern from a glare standpoint, or to any, you know, anybody traveling in the public. It's for safety, and I support that as the engineer for that, why we want that. We also have a lighting nonconformity, the uniform ratio, we're four to one for your ordinance, we're at nine point one to one, which sounds extravagant. However, when you're designing lighting, you're usually designing for a parking lot over a larger area, and you're trying to avoid a lot of high and low points of areas. Interesting enough, when you're looking around points of the building, you're going to have something right at the corner that's low, and on that four, you do the math and it goes up to ten. But you would never know it when you're walking down there. So yes, it's a mathematical bit of variance, or I guess it's a waiver that we're requesting. It does not have any negative impact for anybody who would be walking up and down that street or anybody traveling in terms of vehicles or cars. So again, respectfully request that waiver. In regards to signage, we have three signs that are identified relative to two in the front for one of each of the restaurants. There are conformance in terms of area. And then in regards to the signage along Main Street, we have a hundred and fifty square foot sign, and that also is in compliance with that. We do have the word Oak painted on the side of the building. You'll see that on the elevations, and the fact that it's located on the second floor, I think is what generates the variance, and we'd be respectfully, respectfully requesting that variance. Again, if when you look at the elevation, it makes sense, it's a beautiful look to the building. So again, that would be the variance related to that. I drank a lot of coffee today and I spoke very fast. But I figured, have the easy one going, and you're going to beat up on my architect. And I'm telling you, when you show the pictures, they're going to be a great project for this town. So hopefully you got everything, and if you have any questions, please go for it.
Any questions?
One question, quick one, easy one. When you mentioned before the hours of operation referred only to the Oak Restaurant, are we to assume that both restaurants are about the same hours?
Thank you for asking that, great, great question because I forgot to mention, we intend to have the other restaurant open on the Monday but closed on Sundays. Okay? So I mentioned it's closed on Mondays for Oak, the other restaurant's going to be closed on Sunday. We do anticipate serving lunch there, so those hours would be adjusted based on the lunchtime.
I was more concerned about the lunch versus dinner because of the parking situation in town, assuming that, you know, people will look left.
Yep.
Hopefully, some of the least some by five. Okay, thanks.
Just two quick questions for you. With construction, where would you guys be staging?
Okay, construction, that's it, right? We have to worry about that during our zoning approval tonight? Great question, tough question. So initially and up front, when you start taking down a building like this, there's going to be sidewalk closures. It's got to be for safety no matter what. So A, the So, A, the area that's gonna be closed off, what we're gonna have to open is make, try to maintain the open aspect of Main Street's sidewalk. As this building comes up, we're gonna have to be working off of our own easement and an area in the back. Now, beyond that, when you start saying, hey, I'm gonna bring in a big piece of steel, or I'm gonna have to bring this in, or whatever it may be, that contractor's gonna be creative, he's not gonna be sitting there blocking the South Bridge or Main Street. If there is something that we need a temporary shutdown, we gotta work with the police department, we gotta work with the building department, make sure that we're doing those things to A, make sure everything circulates safely, and that there's no danger for the traveling public first and foremost, but secondly, we're not looking to close down Main Street and create a tie-up in traffic. Nobody wants to deal with that. So, you'll probably, and they'll learn the owners who love to death, but they're probably wondering, spend a lot of money building a building that's zero property line with very little lay-down space to do so, and they may have their contractor renting the space down the street, bringing something in, whatever it may be. But I think the key point to hear tonight is that we're not gonna create traffic concerns, we're not gonna be making any concerns to the traveling public. There will be the requirements to doing a traffic, uh, sidewalk detour, anything to like that, but again, we have been bothered professionals to make sure that we're doing that's right for the town.
And then Jason, real quick, Mike, is there a pre-construction meeting requirement in the development agreement between the borough?
I'm not sure. They will be.
Then maybe provide.
Yeah, Jason, it's in my report that they're gonna put a construction page in line together to address this stuff.
Yeah, I was more curious if they've learned on taking parking spaces and shutting them down during the entire construction out there.
When it gets to that phase, that, that might happen, and that and the station house.
Yes.
So, where that comes up, we'll see if the sidewalk's sufficient. If the sidewalk's not sufficient, we need council approval to take those parking spaces. They're gonna, the shoulder, the Jersey Barrier, or whatever the barricade would have to improve by the public safety PD and all. So, it's gonna, when you get there, the contractor's gonna have a lot to say about what space, that sidewalk, to me, is not gonna cut it down. It's probably gonna be, okay, that's me.
And I don't disagree, there's, as I mentioned, there's five parking stalls there, and if we're gonna close them down, I have to come in for proper permission to do so, so.
And then, as far as the width of the driveway in the back, what's the, what's the final width of that? I know you moved the building back.
Yep.
Did you open up that?
Yes. The distance is, this is over eighteen feet to the nearest, to the nearest obstruction, which is like a lift, the railing for our, um, they have a ten-foot easement, they ask to have an eighteen-foot wide easement for fire and safety, which, again, we can do our half of it, because the other half of it is in an easement, we can't grant it that's on someone else's property. And that building itself, in today's condition, is where it is, right? I can't do that, but we can provide our half, or yeah, actually a little bit more, because we're giving more space.
The Fire March requested twenty-two easement on the easement area, which they have control over, somewhat control over, and so forth. And then, a reduced easement because of what the engineer just said, plus, we're gonna have that application from this board in two weeks, and try to pick up the other side.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so, it's gonna be a twenty-foot easement, but he doesn't have twenty-foot clear space. There's not twenty feet to the property line from the ballards or some structures, so it's reduced now with the intention of picking up the additional five or eight feet on the next application.
Correct.
I have two questions. The awning, how high is it off the ground? I mean, I'm short, so it doesn't bother me.
I'm in the same boat, I can hit my brain last.
How high is it off the ground?
Uh, I, I'm gonna make sure I'm right.
Ten feet.
Ten feet, ten feet.
And the second question is that alleyway then, if I recall walking it, it's a dark and the, kind of torn up a little bit, is that gonna be repaved?
Yeah, I should mention that.
It made hall.
Yep, we're repaving that area.
Yeah, I have a question about the illumination fading.
Yeah, because it's a little dark over there.
We have buildings, we have lights up across the building, and I can warn the light if we need to throw it a little bit further. At the same token, I'm trying to cut it off. There's a, there's gonna be another, there is another building there, there is another application coming, and I hope so, between the two of us, we do it, and I don't wanna have a problem if that person has residence. So, I'll make sure at least the area out where, where I can control is, is where it needs to be.
Yes, this is a residential building, we don't want a lot of light trespass to the south, is what he's saying. Which makes perfect sense. Light trespassing the street is perfectly acceptable, given the circumstance. It's the light trespass on private property that we're trying to avoid.
Right. I just had, I've had so much of questions to comment. Where, as been mentioned, we're gonna have an application here in several weeks for property directed to your south, so you will probably, if all goes well, have to work, you know, in tandem with them, because they're gonna have construction activity at the same time, demo and et cetera, so. I would hope, you know, not to, not to look ahead too far, but you're gonna have to coordinate.
Yep.
You're not building in a cornfield somewhere, you're, you've got limits, and, well, I like what I hear so far.
What's the estimated time for completion? I mean, how long is it gonna be? We've had, we've had issues on Bridge Street, so this is nothing new, so I mean, it can't be any worse than what we've had now, so how long's it gonna take to get this project completed?
From start to finish, from the day we start knocking a building down? If I had my way.
Fourteen months.
Fourteen months, I'll be eating a steak after we start knocking the building down.
Father's Day of next year.
Let's hope.
I'll buy you a steak.
I want that on the record. That comes on the record. Sullivan buys great steak.
I didn't say how big a steak. I didn't say how big a steak. I didn't say how I want. All right. No, I just wanted to be sure that, that you're aware that you will be playing in the sandbox a lot, it'll have.
Understood.
There'll be, there'll be lots of cranes and trucks in there, and the kids will have a lot to watch.
I just wanted to know, are there gonna be shared services between two buildings? Because it looks like it's two different lots, so you could theoretically have blocks sixty-two lot one sold separately from blocks sixty-two lot twenty-two, but are there gonna be shared services?
Our project, just so you're clear, our project is only the dark, only lot one.
Okay.
That building next to us is to stay, it's not our project. Those tenants in operation is independent and up to, we're controlling lot one over.
No, I just saw the two.
Yeah, I should've clarified, because it, I should've clarified, it's dark one.
Restaurant one and restaurant two, no, both are in the same lot.
If I cut that in half lengthwise in a north-south direction.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Mike, do you wanna open up the public questions of the engineer? Anybody from the public? Please identify yourself for the record.
Frank McAlieby, one twenty-nine Barcon Street sidewalk.
Sorry, that was one twenty-nine what?
My question is on deliveries and what have you, do you expect anything coming in off of Warren Street?
Can they, they have the ability to, but the, the aspect, we have frontings directly at the main South Bridge, we also have the front along these Main Street. So, the reason I ask that question, I've got a lot of garbage trucks and stuff that we don't pick up garbage at a lot that I own, but they go and they pick up dumpsters, and they back over my property. I've had to replace the catch basin in there because they're too heavy, the liquor truck's coming in, and then I have to repay my parking lot, and I was just wondering if there's any, if you're taking that into consideration. Well, the fortunate aspect that, for our property is, we have two areas for deliveries, we have our own area for trash pickup that's on our property that has direct access to Bridge. Okay, I just, I don't wanna get caught short and say, all right, Mac, you gotta redo your parking lot because it's all torn up a little bit, thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah. I'm Harriet Goodman, I'm the owner of the W. Burman Building, and the parking lot that's in the area that we're going to be building in.
And what's your address for me?
Eighty-four Connolly Drive, Miltontown, New Jersey.
And the, you know the address of the property that you own?
It's thirty-four, but the, it's thirty-four. Twenty-four dash thirty East Main Street.
Great, thank you so much.
So, my concern is trash collectors not being able to get through the alley to collect the trash containers that service the two restaurants that are in the building currently. Also, parking of people who are doing the construction, or builders, or their equipment using my parking lot area, and my tenants, and their customers can't park there. I don't want them on the property for insurance reasons and for lack of my tenants being able to use it, I mean, I do have signs, no parking, et cetera. And also, in the completion of the whole project, what's to keep your new clients and their customers who are providing and parking on their parking lot where they don't own the property, I do. So, that's my concern.
Anybody else? Can close the public session?
Just for the interest of gravity, you can agree with all the engineering comments in the report, it will work out, is anybody taking session? I'm trying to cut to the chase, I talked about the.
No, no one wants to hear the engineer here.
I know, so all of.
The H twenty, the sewer, the stormer.
Mike, I believe we can work through ninety-five percent of the things that you and I can talk through, I don't think there'll be anything that could drink, bring us back here and would put anyone to sleep talking about drainage and things like that.
So, we don't have to go through all of it?
I don't think we need to unless this board wants to hear about it, but I think we're good to go.
Wanna know what those are?
Well, I would, can we cover it by pages on the report?
Yes.
That's, that's fine, because normally I put in, you know, we'll comply with any and all comments contained in the report, but if that's not the case, or we're not sure.
This is the February sixteenth report, not February sixteenth, we have the Gulf Fables, and we, they have some comments about on page six.
So, I think maybe we can say you'll comply with any and all comments, and then we'll work with him to address the following comments, and then let me know what they are.
Yeah, okay. Fair enough. And I gotta skip through a lot of these in the testimony, hopefully I hit tonight. The easement stuff, I think we talked about, right? We're gonna work through those and provide what's in the back.
Yeah, on page six, it's basically you're saying that you're gonna do three pickups, and you're gonna handle that, essentially what you're saying.
Yes.
I had some questions about the trash loading area, which is, you gotta cover.
And we have rights to that parking easement in the back for paving on, of easement area one point oh one, the stormwater management, I had some questions, basically, the stormwater runoff, it's not really changing much, it's just diverting some of the water more to South Bridge, it's not a lot, but you're just gonna have to show that the additional CFS can handle, that system can handle. I don't think it's a heavy lift, but you're changing the stormwater, you have to go through that. Right, and, and the reality is, is now we have some roof plans, I mean, you have just a balance. Balance to that. They won't have an issue when the work enjoys.
Okay. And then on page eight, the roof leaders, I don't know about your comment or the architect's, it's about, the roof leaders exposed, they're gonna get banged up, just to put the, that's it, maybe for the architect to deal with.
Yeah, and we, we agreed in terms of when I, I looked at that, that we'll make sure it's protected.
Protected.
And when I mentioned it, you asked about the light temperature, and I agree, so. We'll go to thirty, you wanna go to thirty?
If that's in the area, I just don't want it to stand out, it's a little better light in my opinion, but I don't want it to stand out like a sore thumb, everybody around it, so. And that, we had some stormwater management pipe, as you talked about that, the electrical bolt on item four, there's a PSE and G bolt there, everything's in very close proximity, so I just need to get some clarification on the pipe drilling down there and the interaction of the bolt with utilities, basically.
Correct.
All right, uh, site lighting, we discussed on page nine.
The street light, I don't know if we're gonna be able to change that, I knew you said we should look in for a look into a battery?
There's a.
Number eight on page nine.
There's cover lights, they're relatively untracked, it doesn't deter stands for decorative lights, so I'm basically saying, can we change the light out?
Mike, is that our property, is that, is that our bridge or is that our main?
It's in the, it's on the right-of-way, so it's in the burrow right-of-way.
Okay.
But it's on South Bridge.
Main and State Highway.
Yeah, that's, oh, it's on the Borough, I'm sorry, it's on South Bridge.
South Bridge.
It's on South Bridge. So, the question is, do we need the light? We've gotten involved, the applicant wants to put lighting off the building, that we can get rid of the light, you know, with the maintenance agreement. The sidewalk's now we're there, light ended up with no planters, sort of foot traffic, you have plenty of room. There's a comment about the outdoor cafe, I think the architect will deal with it, but pretty clear, but if you wanna, just we'll work that out of the board, like, see if the light can be gone, or replaced, or.
Like, how far south of the corner is it?
It's down like a hundred feet.
Close to the.
You point it out with that camera?
Certainly. Yeah, so, I would say, yeah, it's about a hundred point feet from intersection.
The building lighting will, will replace.
I'm throwing it out to say, the building's right there, sometimes we have applicants where they can do the lighting, throw it out, and we don't need the light. We've done this before, I'm not saying the applicant wants to do that, but it clears it out.
If they could take, if PSE and you do, it's not our light either, and PSE and you said we can take it down, and we live with our building lights?
Right.
So, you guys will work together?
Yeah, we're.
We're done, look to be, just use the building lights along it. Okay, that's each. We, we agree with the contribution and a little being able to plant it along Bridge.
I have a, I have a question about, on item two. In the past, sometimes the work that's being done on the sidewalk, like you've mentioned, could damage the side, could damage a tree, the town, how healthy is that tree? Because I know we've done surveys and studies, does it stay being away and it's gonna get damaged anyway, and they wanna remove the big tree planter to reduce the size and put a four-foot pit, why don't you do that?
So, our intent currently is to protect it as recommended, okay? When that time comes to build and something gets in the way, and we need to disturb more if we need to, and we get proper plans to do so, and we gotta replace it, then we'll have to replace it.
Well, would it be better while you're doing construction and the sidewalk's open, get it out of your way, to then do an improvement that the town wants to get done anyway?
Yeah. My landscape architect did say currently that it's, it's not like it's about to die, so that's why we're just trying to preserve it since it's a mature, more mature tree, but if it needed to, we have to follow the recommendation of how to reduce it.
What I'm getting at is, I think the board would like the tree taken down and the planter replaced.
They want the planter gone, that's the big thing. The planter.
What they're saying, remove the tree, remove the planter, and then put it, put the tree grate, but no, it can't with the planter, it's a roof issue, yeah.
You're, oh, you're saying above ground planter.
There's a planter there, it's four by four.
It really looks like a grave site.
Yes.
So funny.
I'm just saying that if you're already doing work and it's in your way, well then, plan for it and then replace it with what the town is.
There's a planter that takes up a lot of space that could be used for traffic, for outdoor dining, and it's in fair shape. So, the, what the board would like is to see that four-by-four tree planter removed, a fresh tree put in, and a tree grate at the end of the project, so we don't have to go through the drama of having it whacked by the state, or it dies at six months after, it dies six months after the building's done, and we sit back, because what happens is you damage the roads, it takes two or two seasons, then you notice a tree's dead, so to avoid all that potential drama.
We're in.
Uh, the concrete sidewalk, I was just saying, we replace them all, and, because they're just old, they're all, the color's all out. There was a comment about infilling them and reusing the concrete tapers on the sidewalk, and.
For, for, we're reconstructing, so we'll make sure.
No, and then there's a comment about, what we like to do is put, I call it a rat's slab, it's not, it's a concrete slab to support the tapers, because they walk and see what's on it. All the new developments, when I say new, they're all under concrete slabs, and it doesn't move, so I was.
We're gonna do.
Okay. And, and on page eleven, don't touch that curb ramp, that curb ramp at all, on Route On Route twenty-eight, because the D U D policy, if you touch one, you guys are stuck for all four. It's just so unfair, but for that reason, just stay away, in my opinion.
Good.
Looks like, um, you jump to, uh, page, uh, fourteen, salvage lease management. You take the applicant saying they're gonna comply. We don't care about county approval, because you're not gonna have the county, they're recyclables, it's all private.
Yep.
I, I have a question. Is there a possibility for shared services between the businesses there? For dumpster services and other collection, because it sounds like they got people coming and going. For every individual, could they share all of the businesses?
They'll make the best efforts, right?
Well, I'm just saying that, is that a possibility?
You didn't get a quote of that.
No, no, I know, I'm just asking, can they look into that?
Yeah, I, I think the comment really goes into resolution, should the board have the best efforts we've made to see if they can consolidate resources, which you're saying, yes, I mean...
And then getting back to, um, miss, I didn't, I forgot your name, but I don't know if your question ever got answered. So is it possible, are they gonna have additional signage for parking? Work on it, or is she gonna have a total park out here?
I think that's an enforcement issue, huh?
Well, no, it's gonna be her enforcement, you have the pickup sitting there, anytime somebody parks a car, boom, that floor, they can work together ahead of time. So understand, don't park here and don't park there.
I think the easy answer is, is we're allowed to park, we'll sign it for our lot.
Okay.
That's it.
And does that work for you? That you have signs for your parking also?
I already do, he doesn't.
We're just supposed to show you can't really...
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm just seeing. Yeah, they're gonna do it, yeah.
I don't think there's any municipal enforcement allowed back there.
No, because it's part of the property, right?
That's not necessarily true. Because I've seen police writing tickets back there.
Okay.
It's been requested by the property owner, yes.
Yeah.
They, they can come on, tell the property owner, like, some of the...
Great jurisdiction.
Basically saying, maybe you have to tap at the main, and we flow a lot, we're gonna have to ascertain, I don't think we're gonna come anywhere close to eight thousand gallons, but based on the borzos, you know, we'll see. We've done this on a group, but we just, I have to see the layout, and I'm saying we should incorporate outdoor dining just to make sure we're on the same page and all that. We'll see.
Well, we have no outdoor dining technically, so.
Right, there's, there's, okay.
So you won't be able to get it later, then?
No, I, I, nothing. We'll be fine, but the answer is, we're not proposing anything at this time, and we'll deal with it down the road, should it come up, right? Um, a four inch diameter calculation, standard stuff. Okay, and I guess seven, I had a comment of A or B renderings on the outdoor dining, that's off the table right now. We're gonna take care of that later down the road, Mike, that's what we're gonna do.
It's not a proposal, it's a...
Okay, very good. And then I had, uh, I had the condition of the sanitary sewer, I had a flow meter depending on where you're on it, and the condition of the main tying into, how we're doing it.
Yep, and if all goes well, we'll be able to do that soon, coming into spring.
Just to see what the, what the proposal's tying actually, there in good shape. And that if it flows to more than two thousand, then we have to add a big capacity depending on it. Speaking of the main, there's no need to do that, but I don't think it's the main, that's the end here. So we'll just deal with that, right? Okay, and... Any general comments on, oh, the NFPA thirteen, is that engineering comment or architect?
Architect.
Okay. Electrical pool box, we discussed, we'll deal with that. You're showing the pool box in the right of way, I mean, you're showing the transformer, the existing transformer...
Existing, it's underground, we're gonna have to deal with that.
The building, as someone said, has a replacement on the south side, and all the meters and all the electric connections are shown at the basement. So I said that we should get this some approval, because there's a big issue with access that we can put in the basement. And then they show a pool box in the right of way, that we might have to, depending on the variables of that, easements are quite different. They're coming off the transformer, which is in the ground.
Right, and it's owned by, at that point, like, we're, we're coordinating with utility on what we need to do there.
Right.
So, but unfortunately, it's underground, or we're down on space, over there.
We're gonna have to work it out, so there might be some site engineering. They're coming off the existing transformer, they have to go down, they have to make a turn, so they're proposing a pool box, which is standard practice, so they can access and make a turn. This is the question of where that pool box is in relation to all the rest of the spaghetti in the ground.
Correct.
It's all the spaghetti in the ground, so we'll work that all out, is what I'm basically saying.
Right. You know how you're gonna deal with it.
Right.
Okay. Mike, you know, can I connect with...
Um, so I just, we did have Gary Dean here, if there's any, if there's any traffic questions, he did submit a traffic impact study and a report. So if there's any traffic questions, now would be a time of the, of the architect.
Anybody have any questions? I don't. We'll probably get another study, because there's a, a proposal from the state D O T to look at that corner, along with the Grove Street corner, within the next few years. So I'm sure we'll be getting, you know, even more traffic counts.
And Gary, and Gary's also on the adjacent property, as a traffic engineer also. Um, so Jeff Martinson? These are architects.
Hey Jeff, who's Spiderglass, I need some work.
Sure. M A R T I N S O L.
Mr. Martinson, um, could you just provide the board some of your professional experience and licenses?
Sure, I'll give you my educational background first, and then we'll work from there. I have an undergrad degree from Mike University, I have Bachelor of Environmental Design, and I have a graduate degree from Columbia University, Master of Science in Historic Preservation. I've been a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, state of New York, in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for thirty-seven years, and have been in private practice for thirty-six years. Um, I am the, I've been the architect for, um, Nick and the Gusto Group for the Oak Restaurant in Easton, it's called the Italian Boutique Hotel, which is referenced by... We work from the, anything else I could...
I'll let you decide. Can I go back and take it, Ben?
Anybody else notice that?
You, you did say Columbia, right? Columbia, but I couldn't point you there.
I couldn't find parking.
Take the subway at Columbia.
Okay, this, um, this is a very interesting site. Yes, we are gonna tear down the existing one-story building. Uh, and yes, we are going to model, uh, one of the two restaurants, uh, out to, to be similar to, uh, the Easton Three Oak Steakhouse. My charge coming onto this site, though, was to look at, we looked at a couple of other options to begin with for this site, but we gravitated back to the two restaurant scheme, because it seemed to fit most with, uh, the owner's intentions as well as the, uh, the town plan. It's a, it's a difficult site, in that we have about a ten-degree angle here, uh, along the eastern edge. Uh, but what we're trying to do is, in a planning sense, to honor your plan having pedestrian entrances, patron entrances off of Main Street, and service entrances off of alleys towards the rear. Uh, being that there are two restaurants in this site, we're actually in a restricted diagonal property line, we're utilizing shared common spaces such as elevators, such as deliveries, such as utility entrances and storage and those types of things, uh, between the two restaurants, so as not to duplicate those. It'll stink, it'll still be the same ownership, um, but there'll be two different styles of presentation and food types. This, uh, Eastern Restaurant, it has yet to be totally defined, but we'll get it to have that, been thought of in a second. The Oak Restaurant, Three Oak Restaurant, is long and thin. As you see, it's twenty-five feet wide, uh, on this Main Street frontage, and runs back, I believe, about a hundred and seventy feet. That's a long, thin restaurant. Our experience in Easton, and this goes back to the ownership, uh, thought process for, for the Eastern Restaurant, was a vertical restaurant rather than horizontal restaurant. It's very difficult to pull off. Uh, and you can, as you, uh, you can see in the second floor plan, bar elements, and they might believe that this is in your packet as well, bar elements and the like are on the second level. So a, someone coming out to the restaurant for the first time, it's usually by a hostess, and then they are seated on the first floor or go upstairs to the balcony. Listening to patrons at the Eastern Restaurant, we learned a lot about how this functions. The experience is why people come there, as well as the food. And that is, from an architect's standpoint of view, is a dream, because you're, uh, how many people move throughout the space, enjoy the atmosphere, uh, and I believe this is why we go out to dinner a lot. We go out to dinner for, to be coddled, to be served and to entertained, hospitality. Uh, we have a great experience, uh, some of the things that Mike said earlier on, I won't, I won't reiterate, but there's an interior architectural ambiance with, uh, uh, exterior interior brick, exposed timber framing, exposed, uh, uh, heavy timber floors, uh, those types of elements, and they are all of great warmth and great interest while you dine. We have private dining rooms on the upper level with exposed timber trusses. That's correct, right? Uh, that'll be well-served, that's a, part of the other things we learned at the Eastern experience was that service, how, how food moves throughout the space, the difficulties of, of serving in a vertical relationship to a centralized kitchen. Uh, the kitchen will be towards the south, uh, but food stuff will move up through the stairwell and, and/or through the elevator. Um, and, uh, the Eastern Restaurant, uh, there will be generous ground floor space and a bar closer to Main Street, um, and then, uh, an accessway up to a covered roof terrace, and, uh, behind that, an open roof terrace, uh, where people can overlook and enjoy, uh, the square. Uh, that, let me get the renderings, I'm sure you've been able to see here, if the renderings will look at those a little bit, and then talk a little bit about the materials that we use.
Are you gonna have dining on the open roof terrace, or is it just for standing and paying up?
Casual dining. High tops, type of thing, and along, seating along the rail, correct. I don't know why Keith said I was gonna get grilled. The, uh, well, the front is good from the, the corner perspective, it is pubbing mode.
Thank you, look. Jeff, you want the front down, just the...
All of these are in your packet.
The... The Eastern Project, he's in a local historic district downtown, where there are guidelines as far as massing, penetration, scale, use of materials, et cetera. Again, he took that knowledge, took that energy, and brought that here. So we're, uh, at all discussing, I'll show you a little bit about some of the materials I'm talking about below that. We believe we're honoring your ordinance as far as the use of materials, the longevity and the use of those materials. We don't, I believe in deference to the engineer's letter, have any, uh, materials like E I F S or what's called driver or something like that, that's not part of this. There's certainly no vinyl, uh, materials that are part of this project here. All of the materials are longstanding, uh, materials. Some, again, are manufactured, uh, materials rather than natural stone materials. Uh, however, uh, these are highly accepted in most municipalities. The difficulty here is, we have a nice street frontage, the difficulty is in working with the length of the building along Bridge Street. So we've learned, and we also are presenting here, ways to break up the linearity of the facade. And we do that by stepping the building back, as, as was notified the engineer, a bit in the front, giving you a little bit more, uh, room towards the corner, you have a very shallow sidewalk situation along Bridge. And we introduced this artful, I'll call it a trellis rather than a canopy, because it really is a, it's not a roof covering, it is an artful steel, uh, structure, uh, that's comprised of beams, excuse me, columns, beams and wavy, uh, steel plates, uh, put in a pattern. Uh, we're also breaking up the facade by, uh, integrating vegetation along the side of the building. This is, again, something that, uh, hopefully enhances the streetscape environment. Again, we have a very long blank facade, uh, today. Uh, then you, the massing of the building jumps up in the middle and accepts that the glass enclosed, the glass, uh, the opable glass, the roof terrace there, as you see. And then we introduce a couple of gable elements towards the southern end, again, to break up and give it that manor house feel. Uh, the, uh, East Restaurant, uh, is something we, again, it's a two-story building here, uh, adjacent, existing. I don't, we don't know what that might, might be in the future, but it's a two-story building. That's not the right building here, but, uh, regardless, the scale is correct. Uh, and there, again, we're introducing more glass to, again, open that up to, uh, the courthouse side, and then be able to have this roof covering, again, for scale and for patrons here overlooking, uh, the court, beautiful courthouse square. Most of the buildings surrounding here, across the street here, we have a neoclassical, um, building, uh, two stories in height, so it's scale is complimentary there. A catty corner in my direction here, you have a three-story, uh, late, uh, late nineteenth-century commercial building. Uh, again, the square is here, and most of the other buildings along Main Street here are of one to no more than three stories in this area, it's only going down, uh, in the other direction as well. So scale-wise, use of material-wise, we tried to honor your streetscape and fit this building. We feel it's a nice fit, uh, for this corner, uh, and a compliment. Uh, and we cannot, um, only your board can, um, regulate what goes on around this building, but we feel it's a great presence for, for the corner. Let me get some of the materials, physical materials, because I think that's something tactile that we can have and see, that would help us. Sorry for my beach bag. Uh, and I did bring you, so we could see that. I guess one is a window. This is, would be typical of what we'd be using.
She leaves it on.
She'll leave it on, too.
You need this for your garage, or not?
You're making white.
Now, this is a aluminum window, a full aluminum, not clad, with windowing on the inside. Insulating glass, muntens, a true, uh, divided light situation. Excuse me, this is, excuse me, this is a simulated divided light, not a true divided light, meaning this is a full insulating panel, and these are applied, but it is not a grid between the glass and the situation. So this would be similar to, uh, the windows that we're using, obviously it's a different configuration. Here we have casemate windows, we have some double-hung windows, we have fixed transit, uh, windows. And again, now this is would be representative of the style and type that we've used in the project. Oh, corner cuts here. The, um... We're proposing to use, uh, manufactured stone on the East Restaurant. In these here configurations here, as you can see, I've got a lot of examples here on, if you wanna play with that. But this is, uh, the stone we're proposing here, built up on the piers. That's all the materials that are listed in the packet of materials that we gave. The, um... Oak Restaurant has a, we'll call it water table base, uh, that'd be very similar to this finished stone material in, but it's actually gonna be precast concrete, uh, but it would, similar color and texture to this, not the, uh, dirty portion. The brick would be a Woxton Town Brick Company here, which is very, uh, modeled, uh, colored brick. And other accents on the building would look like limestone. This is a, again, a cast stone example, um, of this patina. So we've got that coloration, it appears white here, it really, when you do white, you have a more buff color as presented here. The the roof. It's difficult to see in these situations, but that's a standing seam metal roof. That this is the color of the roof here. This is a cast aluminum. This is just a black color that would be flashing and on the other building.
What's the, on the other building, the horizontal strike to the upper left hand corner there? Aside from the stone, you have that sort of square patch? Yeah. No, the little square.
Over here?
Yes. What's that material?
It's actually metal. It's a metal shingle made by a test. It is a nice diamond shape in its configuration. Similar in metal to the metal that were passed out here, the coloration, but the pattern is a diamond shape, metal side. And things that you can't see here around the back, there was some question as to what that material was. Hardy plank was mentioned. There's two colors that we're using there. That is an arctic white and a pearl gray. We're using that in, I'll call it pack of house cases, not really in any of the principal facades. There are other elements, some cast stone elements, emblems, those types of pieces that we're using there. One, two, three, up and here in the cable end.
Where's the painted oak floor?
That's here. It's between the two, it's between the two windows and that actually has in these two roofing here. Below the roof terrace.
So just to confirm, that canopy, is that the design of one that's too large that we're looking for the variance on? It's gonna be that open?
That's correct.
Concept open?
That's correct.
That's deciding it's a canopy. Yeah, yeah. It's more of a trellis.
Exactly. I probably used the word trellis and that's not, it shouldn't happen in your ordinance, I believe. It's really a trellis because it is open and these greenery panels here were able to to sustain themselves. We maybe get that to grow up into that unit and it's really an artful piece. That's what we're trying to do. Create art, create interest. In Easton, I've watched more photos taken of people below that awning than anywhere else in the town. And it's just a highlight of the area and it's become a little, a little bit of a signature of the gusto enjoyed with gusto group with their buildings. So it's actually, it's a fun element that helps us architecture to break up the linearity of the facade. Inasmuch as we like brick, there's a lot of brick, so we're just trying to help break that up. I don't know if I have anything more. I don't have anything left in my bag here. I borrowed my wife's beach bag. Sorry. But
Can you show us the facade that has where the parapet wall that blocks sort of where the alleyway is? We have a solid elevation that's rendered in color where the delivery, the back alleyway is.
The southern elevation.
Along the road where the parapet wall is.
I don't have that in a rendering, no. I have that.
Same materials on?
This is gonna be, but I wanna see this.
The back elevator.
No, I wanna see, I wanna see that parapet wall. Is this gonna be continuous brick?
Yes.
This parapet wall.
Yes. This short distance here. Yes.
And how?
Nine foot, as you know, the sidewalk slopes to the south. We're introducing a couple of raised planter areas here, again, to buffer that path with some wrought iron elements here. Similar to railing here.
You'll have greenery coming like softening that wall. You'll have greenery in front of that parapet wall?
And then here, yes. Yes. We're planning on doing that again. Not wanting to put up some loafers rail or something so people don't sit there, but integrating the nice railing and then some greenery and flowers. Because I know it's notified the engineers for how we're draining them and things like that. We're gonna, we're working that out as far as cleanouts and the like.
Sure. Thank you.
So I guess I could just answer the engineer's comments if he had any of those in the end.
Yeah, I had a question about the cat that I have grazed the stuff. It's not a stubber.
No, the, the cast iron boot. Cast iron boot. I, in deference to your comment, I'd like to keep it at two feet only because the water table does come up. It cans back to the building and then the leader goes up. I think that two foot is high enough to protect that and is a standard stock item. Rather than something that is four, if you get up to four feet, they're usually boxier and they're not as decorative. So I'd rather stay with the ones that were two feet down low, which I think would protect from shoveling and damage. I mean, if someone's gonna bang and knock on your roof leader, they can do it at six feet rather than five or five feet. I'm just saying four feet probably doesn't matter.
Right, I understand your comment. I'm just saying that the roof leader could be a durable material, not your standard residential.
Correct. No, no, no.
Not your accordion is what I'm saying.
No, 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 no. They're organic, the rectangular. Gutters will be semicircular. We will, we can get circular leaders if you require. You know, the, or the fastener back to the building will be concealed, et cetera. So it's not, it's not a cheap residential installation.
Just a durable something.
Correct.
This setting, the high volume setting.
Correct. Correct.
So we will comply with IM2 location?
No, it's, it'll be durable, we'll be staying in the boot will be two feet, but the gutter itself, the roof leader coming down will be made of durable material.
That's correct.
So we won't have an issue with.
Yes, it's indecorative metal cover, so we said we'll comply with that. No, it's indecorative metal cover. It is the actual thing.
I had recommended the boot be extended up.
No, we'll make that, I would say point, point, point oh four oh aluminum or something like that rather than.
He's saying that you'd rather have it because of the water table for aesthetics, you'd rather have the boot at two feet.
That's correct. That's correct.
And then just use a heavier durable material from there off so that doesn't interfere with the aesthetics.
We just do it upon the people's, like, features.
Yes, well, or.
Sorry, I have just any more questions?
I had a lot of questions mechanical, just the stuff on the roof, the louvers, vents, noise, screening.
What we're anticipating doing, say with kitchen exhaust, in deference to what's there today in the restaurants, you can see all that on the roof, is to have to have that concealed with chimney enclosures as it goes up the building. Any of the mechanical equipment would be around the corner. There's a number of flat roof areas that wouldn't be front and center. I'm very sensitive to those types of things as well. I push engineers to hide equipment inasmuch as we need to service them. You'll see that there's implanted doors that come out at the right place for people to come out onto roofs. There are low pitched roofs facing east on upper levels that we'll use for mechanical equipment as well.
So the mechanical equipment on the roof will be screened then from public view? Is that what?
It'll be screened by the building itself, yes. There won't be additional screening added to parapets or something like that because the equipment will be.
Set back for another.
Correct.
So that the building, the inside wall, so you won't be able to see it. The concern is from people walking.
Absolutely.
Six feet, you know, six stories in the air somewhere else.
Absolutely, absolutely. I agree and will where I don't have a mechanical plan per se here, so I don't know the exact, can't show you the exact location, but they will be screened by the building itself.
Okay, and is the duct, did you say will internally run to the roof?
Kitchen exhaust, there's two kitchen exhausts that will be, we're gonna put a shroud around that to make it look like a chimney. And two, and two installations.
So internally run then shroud on the roof.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Yeah, the glass enclosed area there.
This here roof?
This is, this gives me a better view of it. That will be where people can dine underneath it and have the view of the sky.
This area here? Yes. Yes, and these are opable, windows will be upsliding. And then the roof itself will not move, but will, panels will slide up the roof to give you an open air feeling.
Will there be ventilation in that? How does that work?
Mechanical ventilation.
I mean, is it gonna be, will it be, will it get stuffy in there?
No, it will have, it either be natural ventilation.
Or you'll have somewhere.
Or mechanical ventilation. Correct.
Do you have this on the Eastern building?
Yes, we do.
All right, it's time I'll open it up to the public for questions of the architect. Hearing the closing of the session.
Our final witness is Art Bernard, a professional planner.
Hi, Art, could you just follow the rest?
P E R N A R D.
Art, could you provide some of your, your educational experience as well as your professional experience, your resume?
Sure. I am a managing member of my own. I have a master's in city and regional planning from Arthur's University. I am a licensed professional planner. I've been licensed for over forty-five years. I've represented twenty-seven municipalities in various capacities, sometimes performing the role of Mr. Cole here and I review development applications, sometimes show master plan elements and redevelopment plans. I've represented private sector clients before local boards and in court, all over the state, and served the courts as special master in seven years. This is my first time in front of a board and I'm, and I'm gonna say I'm excited to be here for this restaurant and I'm looking forward to being here too. I'm here to talk about the variances in weight. And let's do the variances first. We need a rear yard setback variance where the standard in this case is the height of the building of forty-two and a half feet. The existing condition is four point seven feet. We're improving the condition to twenty-seven point six feet, but we still need the relief due to that. The current maximum coverage on the site, the current coverage on the site is a hundred percent. The standard is ninety-five percent. We're asking to maintain the current condition of a hundred percent. You've heard a little bit of discussion about what we'll call a trellis. Instead of a, because it's really not a canopy or an awning. But if it was a canopy or an awning, the standard of how far can be protrude from the building is four feet. We're at seven point eight feet. Again, at that point where it's seven point eight feet, the building is being set back about three, three point, three or four feet. And so it doesn't really overhang towards the street that closely. And because of the fact that it's seven point eight feet, set at four feet, and because the sidewalk is narrow there, we also need relief from the maximum percentage of projection over the width of the sidewalk of the trellis. Your standard is fifty feet, we're at fifty-seven point one feet. Our facade sign is a, is a painted sign on the second floor. Your ordinance requires this be on the first floor. And you also have a standard that the window area on the first floor decides to be forty percent of the facade. So those are, those are the variances. And I think all of these variances can to be granted based on the C2 criteria in the municipal land use law. Where the proposal advances various purposes of municipal land use law and the benefits of the proposal substantially outweigh the detriments. And in assessing C2 variances, I think the reports have been pretty clear that board should, when weighing the benefits and detriments, consider the benefits of the entire proposal and not just the benefits of specifically such as itself. So in this matter, the use is permitted use. The proposal, the applicant is complying with most of your bulk standards. And if one looks at your redevelopment plan, I think this proposal clearly promotes various goals and objectives, including reinforcing and supporting the retail base of the central business district by encouraging a service use. This is a great service use between the courthouse and the, and the train station. We will service the retail uses and the people who are visiting the town. It promotes the goal of providing incentives for fuller utilization of developed property. This is a wonderful expansion of the, of replacement of the one-story building that's on the corner now. And I think it clearly improves the aesthetic appearance of the area through general redevelopment. But just through Martinson's, Martinson's presentation of this building was quite impressive. When you adopt the redevelopment plan, one of the things you have to do is talk about how your redevelopment relates to the state development and redevelopment plan, Mr. Cole has done that in his report. And the redevelopment plan, for those of you, the state redevelopment plan, for those of you who aren't familiar with it, is thinks of itself as a growth management plan in which they've divided the state into various planning areas and each of those planning areas have different goals and objectives. Some places the goals are more agricultural preservation, but Somerville is in planning area one, where the, the state development and redevelopment plan encourages growth. It encourages development in mixed-use centers, such as this one, and industrial economic development. It encourages redevelopment in centers and Somerville was actually designated as part of a regional center that included Brereton and part of Bridgewater Township in nineteen ninety-six. And, and I think one of the things that, that Mr. Cole has done, which was quite nice in reading his reports, is he, he recognizes what a contribution this restaurant can have to the area. And he talks about that it would be a fantastic addition to the downtown and reinforces Somerville as a place of destination, which is exactly what the state plan has in mind for, for Somerville. So with that background and getting back to the criteria for C2 variants, I think this proposal clearly advances various purposes of the municipal land use law. Including purpose A, which is to encourage the appropriate use of land. Purpose G, which is to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of commercial type uses. Purpose D, to ensure that development of individual municipalities does not conflict with the state plan. I can't think of a development that is more consistent with the state plan. And purpose I, which is promote a desirable visual environment. And I think Mr. Martinson's drawings and renderings certainly do that. There's also benefits for each variant. In terms of a rear yard setback, as Mr. Cahill said, the applicant is actually improving the existing condition from four point seven feet to twenty-seven point six feet. And the setback relief makes it possible to attract a major restaurant to the area and still provide the ability to serve the restaurant in the rear yard. With regards to the impervious coverage, this is an existing condition and the advantage of the relief is that it provides more room for pedestrian traffic and doesn't force landscaping into areas that are difficult to maintain. The terrace relief in terms of the width of the canopy and the percentage of the sidewalk covered by the canopy or the trellis, helps break up the mass of the building and as Mr. Martin says, an artful addition to the building. And the relief from the maximum percentage of the projection of the sidewalk, I think should be granted because the the trellis is not only good at looking and interesting, but that it is set back a little bit from the street. but that it is set back a little bit from the street, and the relief we're looking for is at least partially a function of how narrow the sidewalk is in that area of the borough. The window relief with the forty percent standard is interesting, I get it, I think, and the standard makes sense, I think, for a retail use. But the advantage of the relief is that it allows for a high-quality restaurant where the focus is on the interior experience rather than the outdoor experience, and it makes it easier for the operator to regulate the heat, to maximize the comfort of his customers, while still allowing for a different type of restaurant where you can see that there's a lot of glass and windows, where customers can focus on the outside and the square associated with the courthouse or anyplace else from the rooftop amenity. So again, the advantage of the relief is that it promotes this service use that's encouraged by the redevelopment plan. Now, the sign is on the second floor facing Bridge Street. It's not an illuminated sign, it's a painted sign. And the second floor, the advantage is it provides greater visibility to the public and allows the public to recognize that this is the Oak Restaurant without interfering with the trestle, the greenery on the side of, on the facade on Bridge Street, or the windows in the lower area of the building. And so it just seems to be a good location for that sign. So those are my positive clues with variance, I have to do negative. And that deals with the impact on the public good, and I certainly don't see any substantial detriment to the public good. The proposed rear yard setback is more conforming to the current situation and allows the restaurant to be serviced, to have the dumpsters in the back, like any restaurant would need. The maximum impervious coverage is an existing condition. I don't see any other stores or restaurants along Bridge Street or along Main Street where there is other vegetation. There's little room for any planning, certainly on Bridge Street, and the planning's really be difficult to maintain in that area. I don't see any substantial detriment associated with the trestle, I think it adds to the interest of the building. And again, no substantial detriment to the window space on the first floor. On the contrary, I think the architecture is gonna be a real plus for the area. And with the sign, it's not a lit sign, there's no neighbor that's gonna be impacted across the street. And the sign isn't really that much higher than other signs you see on Main Street where the others, one-story buildings, and at the top of the building there's a sign, and it's technically on the first floor. But it's really not all that much lower than the sign that's being proposed for the second floor here. The other thing I need to cover is the impact on the zone plan. And this, I think, is an excellent use of the property based on its proximity to the courthouse and the train station. The use is permitted by your redevelopment plan, the applicant's complying with most of your bulk standards. So this certainly, what's being proposed, there certainly isn't a major break for your zoning principles. The applicant is actually improving the existing outpouring for the rear yard setback, and his request to maintain the hundred percent impervious coverage, I think is reasonable given the lack of vegetation in the entire area. The variances for more trestle area promotes the aesthetic appeal of the building. The relief of the window areas, a reasonable request for a permitted restaurant use, and the sign really isn't all that much higher than your ordinance would allow. So in terms of the variances and C2 criteria, I think the proposal clearly advances purposes of municipal land use law. I think the benefits clearly outweigh any detriments, and I would urge the board to grant that review. Now, we also need, I think, for waivers, one is for dumpsters in the back. And I just think it's reasonable for dumpsters, for restaurants to have a dumpster. Service uses, like restaurants require places where trash and recyclables and, and it would be a practical difficulty not to have one, I really don't see another place for them. We also need relief for street trees, that down. And there is, we've talked about a mature street tree along Main Street, they're not on Bridge Street, but the sidewalk's so narrow, I think, and Mr. Cole and I agree that it's really not appropriate to clog pedestrian traffic with the street trees. And the applicant has agreed to make the monetary contribution of moving planting the street trees, as Mr. Cole has suggested. As Mr. Cahill has told you, because we need to light the entrances so people are safe, we exceed the maximum foot candles at the property room. But I think, you know, it's fairly typical of a downtown streetscape. Also, you have a standard that frankly is new to me, I had never heard of this until about two months ago. This sightline and uniformity ratio, which is computed, it's worth parking lots and sidewalks. It's computed by taking the average foot candle elimination and dividing it by a standard of zero point two. And your standard is four to one ratio, we're at nine to one. I think the standard is designed to encourage a pattern of third even lighting throughout the site. It probably works on a larger site, like a parking lot better than a sidewalk area. In this case, we have more intense lighting near the entrances and very little lighting in some other areas, which causes the relief. But it seems like a reasonable thing for a restaurant to use in the downtown area to make sure the entrances are lighted properly. And so that's, that's all I have for the landing site for the wait. Thank you, do we have any questions? Just, just on the, on the western side, on the second floor, is that design basically for drivers coming up Bridge Street, do they see it? I think people coming up Bridge Street could see it, people that are walking through the train station could see it. People that, people that are on Main Street obviously could probably see the sign that's pointed toward Main Street, but you can also see it in various places along Main Street as well. I like the fact that it's not lit, because although there's no residences across the street now, that may change all the time. It certainly makes it less interesting. Any other questions? Anybody from the public? There are no comments, we close the public session. I have to say, I like it, I liked it from the first time I saw it. And I think you have incorporated the elements that we suggested a long time ago, and I think it's gonna be a great addition. I think, I think in spite of the fact that we've got variances, I think in a lot of cases, we're improving the situation here, so. I think as far as the variance has gone in, the canopy, it's not an enclosed one, it's not, you know, making it feel enclosed coming down the sidewalk. So I have no issue with that one, we're improving the yard coverage, so. I'd be happy to make a motion to, you know, if we're ready for that, I don't know if you have anyone.
I just have one thing, we need to open the public for general comments.
I'm just gonna do it, didn't you?
Well, that was just for Art.
I thought it was just gonna last. Any other general comments?
Not yet. I can go through some of the conditions, do you want me to reiterate the?
I'll say it. Pregled the variances and then the notes from previous.
Both you like it and I like it, he's rolling by mistake.
All right, so the variances are as that one in Mike's report, the only ones that they do not require are minimum lot frontage, and they did change the protection wall sign to no longer be required either. So otherwise, all of the waivers, deviations, variances, and over there set forth are what's being requested tonight in addition with preliminary and final set plan approval. The conditions that I heard, oh, I'm sorry, one more thing, we did need to address the, yes, NFPA. So, so that will be, everything within the fire marshal's letter will be complied with.
That's correct.
I guess we're that. So, conditions are compliance with all of the comments in Mike's report and the comments in the prior, prior report as well. But four, we discussed during the engineer's testimony that he will work with Mike to address item number eight on page nine. And the applicant agreed to address item number D two on page ten, that's the one where they're going to take out the existing tree and the planter and put a new tree back into the tree grid. Of that, the applicant will utilize best efforts to consolidate trench services with adjacent property owners. With regard to the architects' comments in Mike's report, will comply with all of them and will work together to address item number two on page eight. Mechanical equipment will be in addition to our standard.
Just have a quick comment, I'd like how you design a brick building that doesn't just look like a big brick building. It's got enough interest, it's got enough variety, and Somerville has a great history of brick. We're building an emergency services complex, and that was criteria one, that it have a brick look to it. And so this would be a great asset. I just could ask you, be very careful during your construction, demolition, and construction phase. It's a busy corner, high-traffic corner, kids will be walking there. And again, it's not a vacant field zone, and I know you've probably done projects of an infill basis before, and your rural resources are available, you, in the planning state, to make sure that that is safe. I'm excited, it's, it's one more piece to the puzzle, and we welcome you.
Thank you.
I do, Mary. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant came before the architectural review board, but they have not come before the planning board. This is going to be their presentation tonight, which they did, with all the materials. The architectural review board, we recommend planning board approve it.
So we're also approving the area's recommendations?
Yes. Does he want to say one file or two files?
Can we do it all at once, or do we have to do?
I don't see why not.
I definitely will.
I'll say it.
Brian Devine.
Yes.
Peter Assins.
Yes.
Dennis Salt.
Yes.
Frank Hope Brady.
Yes.
Andrew Thayer.
Yes.
Arne Akins.
Yes.
Jacob Frasca.
Yes.
Alcarresi.
Yes.
Larry Clayton.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you very much.